Trustees Cloud in Webster. Principal Miller, Vice Principal Victor, welcome. We are calling this meeting to order at 5:45. We are meeting in person with Zoom broadcasting the meeting. We are only taking public comments in person and we're going to have that as a discussion item later. Do we have any comments from the public on our closed session items? We have some members of the public here. Do you have a comment on, okay? So we are going to adjourn to closed session until 6 o'clock. All right, reconvened at 6:03. Welcome, everyone. Nice to see you all. All right, we are going to continue with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, next up, we have school reports from McDowell, CASA, and Petaluma High. So McDowell, I believe, is first. Okay.
Hello, my name is Grayson Tao. I am a sixth grader at McDowell Elementary School. I've been a student here since kindergarten. I'm also here today as principal for the day because I earned over $1,000 for our school's jobathon. I worked hard to raise money this year to help improve our school so that we can have better experiences to attend sixth grade camp and upcoming field trips. One thing I learned through fundraising is how to make money. I'm now invested, I'm now interested in saving money and investing in the stock market and planning for the future. My favorite part about McDowell is my friends. I get to play soccer and eat lunch with them every day. This year, we got a new set of official soccer goals. They are real goals and exchange resources because we can now have real games and shoe in an actual sized school. I also like how nice all our teachers are at McDowell. They are really friendly to the students and they ask us about what we've been doing lately and what things have been going on. When they teach us new things, they go step by step to show us how we can do something. If we don't understand a concept, they'll show us how they, they'll show us how until we can do it on our own. This makes it really easy to run our school. I especially like the new coat of paint at our school. It feels new, fresh, and clean. It just looks nicer. I would recommend coming to McDowell Elementary School to any younger kids, especially for the dual immersion program, so that when you're older, you'll most likely be able to get a better job because you can speak multiple languages. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lucas Wellston Field. I am here. I am in the third grade dual immersion program at McDowell Elementary School. I am here today as the third place winner for our school's jobathon. I worked hard to raise money for our school by going to house to house to ask for donations. I sold hot dogs at school. I even mowed the lawn. That was actually pretty hard. But I stayed focused on my goal and learned that hard work pays off. I love McDowell School. I like my principal. I like my classroom. I like my teachers because she is nice. My teacher will do anything to make us understand our schoolwork. She helps us to do the impossible. Lo que más me gusta son las matemáticas. Me gusta hacer problemas complejos. De mayor quiero ser policía o maestro. I am glad that I am learning that math so then that I, as police officer, I will be able to tell if someone is driving above the speed limit or not. También quiero hacer maestro lo de español del cuarto grado. Así que me al- alegro de pren- aprender español en la escuela porque me ayudará a ser maestro bilingüe. The best part about this year is our new music and art teacher. I like art because we get to make sculptures and my art teacher teaches us how to shading with our drawings. Music, in music, we are learning how to play the marimba. Recomendo la escuela de McDowell porque en mi opinión creo que es la mejor escuela para aprender español. I would rather go to McDowell School than any other school. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Birdie Proshen. I'm a third grader at McDowell Elementary School. I am here today as principal of the day to share about why I like McDowell School. I worked really hard to raise money for the school jogathon. I was really busy because I had to work around my cheerleading schedule. I went to many businesses and, and some houses knocking on doors and asking for support for McDowell School. Sometimes people said no, which made me sad, but I understood that people can't always get money. I raised $2,530 because I really wanted to be principal for the day. I was so excited. I love McDowell School. My favorite part of the, our school is our teachers. If something goes wrong, they talk to us and help us to work things out. They are very kind to everyone. I also like how the school is very organized. There are lots of competitions in this school. I like how once a month, we do the Walk and Roll to School Day. It's just so fun to be here. McDowell is an amazing school. I would recommend it to anyone. It is a big school and you are guaranteed to find a lot of friends. Thank you.
Didn't they do a great job?
All right, good evening and thank you for giving us this opportunity to do our site report for McDowell's Elementary School. We have expanded our student body to 300 students and growing. We have welcomed six new educators to our school, enriching both our Spanish dual immersion and our traditional English programs. Our focus on community engagement is evident through successful fundraisers and unique initiatives like the Walk or Roll to School Day, facilitated by partnerships with organizations like Safe Routes to School. We are in the process of securing a community schools grant that will be instrumental in serving our underprivileged and underserved students, directly aiding our mission to close the educational gap. Our flourishing PTA has launched a garden club and other cultural events such as Dia de los Muertos on November 3rd, if you would like to join us, which offer comprehensive educational experiences. Moreover, we have exciting additions like the Marimba Club for all of our students to be able to participate in, which promote creativity and teamwork among our students. As we look to the year ahead, we are committed to innovative programs and community building activities, all designed to elevate the experiences of our diverse student body, staff, and families. Your continued support is vital as we continue to work together to achieve the educational excellence and narrow the achievement gap. Thank you for your time and your unwavering support of McDowell School.
Right, thank you. It was a treat to hear from all of our principals today and students. Thank you so much.
So raising so much money. That's amazing.
Can you turn on your?
So on the T-shirts, it looked like all the different colors of the butterfly. So was, have you always done that or was that something new? It was so cool. So the T-shirts are the colors of the rainbow to show the rainbow. Yeah, and so we have starting from TK. So we go in order of the colors of the rainbow. So in our full school picture, they're starting from, it starts from pink and then we end in black because that's kind of like all the colors. So yeah, that was an addition that our PTA, our thriving PTA brought to us last year and we're continuing that tradition.
Hey Ruth, can I ask, is the community school grant, is that in a separate effort from the Family Resource Center or is it in conjunction with and how, what's the relationship with the adult school?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. Thank you Sheldon. And I'm very excited about the community schools grant that we're working on and we will be working with the Family Resource Center and with the Petaluma Adult School. And so we're working with, right now, we're just starting the conversation and we'll be developing a committee and moving forward. And so I'm really excited about that, starting a wellness center. And we're already doing a lot of the things that a community school requires, but adding that piece and then also some more parent involvement. And so we're really excited about what that's going to look like.
So just to build on that, so we have the Community Schools Planning Grant, right, that we received. So we have our community schools coordinator Wellness Center and she's working on, working on Community School Wellness Center for several of, many of our schools, particularly targeting the schools that we think we have the best shot at with a, from a, from a grant, from a demographic standpoint. So we know that's going to play a factor in whether we receive ongoing grant support or not.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. All right, CASA.
Um, so I'm Rona Hanson. I am CASA Grande's ASV President.
And I'm Drake Shoemaker, Petaluma's ASV Vice President.
Um, and so for our site report to start, over the summer, CASA Grande and Petaluma got together and we did a leadership workshop in the NMU at CASA. And Scott Bakovich joined us. He is a youth leadership speaker and he basically brought new ideas to the table and helped prepare us for the year ahead. And one of these things he taught us was the weekly involved challenges, which we have assigned to our freshmen at CASA to perform. So basically for one of the weeks, for example, they created these gift baskets to give to our foreign exchange students.
Okay, so for the first week of school at Petaluma, it was very fun. We had our link crew leaders come in after many and many hours of training and they gave tours to all the incoming freshmen and did fun icebreakers to get them prepared for the new school year ahead of them. And then we also held a back to school rally, which we introduced new staff, did fun activities, and what we aim to accomplish.
Then for CASA's first week, we had the Gaucho Roundup. And with that, we had freshman orientation, which was a new thing we did this year. Basically, the freshmen were able to get tours and they were guided by upperclassmen from the school. And then after that, they gathered in the Olay for a barbecue. And then right before back to school night, we also had Carnival de Casa, which was hosted by the admin. And basically, everyone got to come for about an hour and a half and go to a bunch of different booths and food trucks and just hang out before going to all the classes.
And then at the end of the first week, we held our annual back to school neon dance, which was a huge success. And for the first time, we sold tickets at the door and we sold 70 plus tickets, which is very good for it being the first time, in addition to the ones that we sold previously earlier in that week.
Um, and then on CASA's side, we did our Color by Class Dance. We decided to host this in the NMU instead of the gym and there were many activities like Spike Ball and Cornhole. And we got Chick-fil-A to cater, so everybody got free Chick-fil-A. And then we didn't sell quite as many tickets, but all the people who went to the dance were very happy and had a great time, so. Um, and then also, this was CASA's first year ever doing senior parking spots, which was super exciting. We sold about 90 parking spots and so they're all painted and they look super good in the parking lot. We were just super happy to be able to do this.
And then both Petaluma and CASA had done a senior sunrise where we gather up on the field before the sunrise and we all watched together. And it was foggy, so that means that it was good luck for the school year. Fingers crossed. So yeah.
Yeah, we had a great time at Senior Sunrise, even though we didn't really get to watch it. But it was super fun to get together with everyone and just enjoy some snacks before school started.
When you say you got together, there, Petaluma High was at Petaluma High, you used to get it on the same day in spirit, you were together, okay?
Yes.
And then that following week, we had Congressman Huffman visit and talk to students about what is going on and actions that they're going to take. And it was also just a great Q and A experience for students and very interactive to them.
Um, and then at both of our schools, we did Club Rush. And so for CASA, there are about 45 clubs at CASA and so each of them got to set up a table if they wanted to, to get more members and get people excited about their club and get information about when they meet. And then there are 64 clubs at Petaluma. Or 46, 46 clubs.
And then the week before homecoming, we had a rally, which was a great turnout and a lot of homecoming proposals, which was included in the rally. So that was great to see. And then both band and cheer performed and they both did amazing. And then also on September 19th, Nicole Mann, who was selected to go to space, came to Petaluma High School to talk about her experience and showed off amazing leadership skills. Petaluma High hosted a total of seven schools to come and watch what she had to say. The band performed. She visited the library with a selected number of students who were interested in what she was a part of. And then she also had visited the auto shop to see what the students were up to. And Petaluma High feels greatly honored to have held this as an event there. And then that's also some of them. And then during that same week, all classes, including FFA and clubs who were interested, put together their homecoming floats in the parade, which was also very nice to see. They did amazing. And then on September 23rd, ASV put together the Homecoming Dance and sold many tickets to students, which also had a great turnout. And then the money is going to fund the senior class.
Um, so over at CASA, something we've been doing since the school year started is staff appreciation. Two of the things we hosted were our librarian appreciation. So we basically just gave them posters and little gifts to make sure that they feel that what they're doing is seen. And then also our campus supervisor Ralph retired and moved to Arizona, so we gave him a little send off and made a gift basket for him.
And then last week, I believe on October 4th, yes, on October 4th, we celebrated Noche Hispanian Night for any families to attend. It was a great experience. And they had amazing food along with a band to play music for. So shout out to PTSA for helping us fund that in a short amount of time.
Um, and then fall sports at both schools are football, volleyball, girls golf, girls tennis, cross country, cheer, and girls' flag football, which is new this year. And then over at Petaluma, boys and girls water polo, which I'm super jealous about and hope CASA gets a pool soon.
And then the honor roll for Petaluma High, the freshmen had 222 students, which was 68% of the freshman class. The sophomores with 126 students, 52% of the class. The juniors with 194 students, with 63% of the class. And seniors with 233 students, with 74% of the class. So good job to everybody. And the total came out to 809 students on the honor roll. And then also, we are going to be hosting a fundraiser of Pie Face to help raise funds for the memorial of the loss of two students sadly at Petaluma High. The date is to be determined. We don't have that fully decided yet. And then there were some students in ASV who put together a memorial for those two students. So it's up in the library and it's amazing, so. And then also, we have breast cancer awareness. So throughout the month of October, we will be supporting breast cancer awareness along with class volleyball the week before fall break and holiday cheer. For those who don't know who holiday cheer is, it's people can donate any supplies to any classroom and it goes to people in need. So hopefully we'll pair up with Unavida this year again, fingers crossed, so, yeah.
And then some upcoming events at CASA are our haunted homecoming and all those festivities. So we will be having our dance this Saturday from 7 to 10. And then Thursday is our parade where clubs can make a float or walk and each class gets to make a float with a theme in order for them to have a candidate for our homecoming royalty. And then we will be having the rally on Friday and the varsity football game also on Friday, which will be announcing the royalty and who won during halftime. And then also, we're doing CASA Kickoff, which is before the football game. It'll be kind of like Carnival de Casa where a bunch of food trucks come and each class will be selling items off their float. And it's just a time for anyone in the community to come and be a part of the CASA campus and culture. And we also wanted to invite, invite all of you guys to come and just be a part of that. It's from 4 to 6:30 on the 13th. Um, and then both of our schools are looking forward to Egg Bowl. And we are just hoping to promote it like we did last year with it being a friendly competition and it'll be on Saturday, October 28th. And that's what we have for you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Rona, I do have a quick question. Where is Egg Bowl going to be this year? Okay.
Thank you. Also, how long would the memorial be up in the library?
Um, I don't know how exactly long. I'm honestly not sure.
But it's there now?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you both. We will take a five minute break.
Your family, your.
So, there you go.
I see. It's more red that has on the green. Yeah. All right. Trustee Cloud, are you ready?
I'm here.
Okay, all right. Um, next up is item 7.2, update and explanation of board goal number five.
Good evening and thank you for giving me this moment. I want to take this time to share a little bit more about Goal Five in our LCAP. I'm hoping to address tonight why we have a Goal Five and to best understand what that goal means for PCS. I also invited Lindsay Moon, our academic coordinator, and Sarah Fountain, our Director of Special Services, to weigh in and, and help answer any questions, if there is any at the end. So California developed a system of support to help districts and schools meet the needs of their students by, one, improving performance in each of the eight state priorities. Two, addressing achievement gaps between student groups. And three, by improving collaboration with community partners. So under the California Systems of Support, there are three levels. Level one, general assistance available to all districts and schools. Level two, differentiated assistance, a more targeted support based on a set of criterias. And level three, intensive intervention for districts that are, who have chronic low performance for students typically for more years. So under the California Systems of Support there, sorry, how do you mention that? PCS is at level two differentiated, for differentiated assistance. And PCS qualifies for DA because we have very low status in both ELA and mathematics, as well as very high status in chronic absenteeism. So for districts with at least one student group meeting the criteria and at least two priority areas are eligible for differentiated assistance. So as you can see in this slide here, for English, our students with disabilities are 91.5 from standard. And in mathematics, they're 132.3 from standard and chronic absenteeism at 29.8%.
And this is over the last three years, right?
This was last.
Just last year. And Tonya, did you, were you going to mention about the other districts and?
Yes. So, um, yeah, so we, we are under differentiated assistance for students with disabilities of the 14. Sumo County Schools, 13 of them are also in the same situation. So we're not the only ones in this, uh, differentiated assistance for students with disabilities. So why does PCS add a goal in our LCAP for, for this year? So in January of last, of this year, the CDE released a result list of all the schools that qualified for differentiated assistance over multiple years and needing it to be a part of the LCAP. And we were on that list. And the reason why is because Assembly Bill 98 revised the LCAP statute, which requires certain districts to include goals focused on improving, improving the outcomes of low performing students. And one of those conditions is that over three years, students who have performed low over three years qualify for, for differentiated assistance over three years and therefore must have a goal in our LCAP. So because PCS has qualified for differentiated assistance for the same student groups over the, over the last three years, 2018, 2019, and 2022, dashboards, we are required to have that LCAP goal. And this slide there just kind of shows you that trend over the last several years for English Language Arts. And the slide here just shows you that trend for mathematics. So our LCAP Goal Five reads, by June 2028, students with disabilities will improve in English Language Arts and mathematics as measured. and mathematics as measured by the California School Dashboard by at least thirty points, moving from ninety-one point five to sixty-one point five in ELA and hundred and thirty-two point three to a hundred and two point three in mathematics. And again, these numbers represent points from standard. The dashboard uses distance from standard to measure ELA and math and math status. So for students with disabilities, the average for all students was ninety-one point five and a hundred and thirty-two point three below standards in ELA and math respectively. And so um we selected the target of thirty points based on the five-by-five grid, which produces the color performance levels for our district. So the dashboard, if the distance from standard improves of at least at least three points in both ELA and math for students with disabilities, we would we would result in an orange performance level, moving us out of DA. And I'll ask Lindsay to kind of go over that five-by-five grid and what that kind of means.
When the dashboard comes out this year, we will once again have a fully functioning dashboard. We haven't had that since twenty nineteen. So the colors are coming back and this is behind the curtain on how we get those colors. So the it, this is the five-by-five grid, which is comprised of two different things. It's status and change. So status is what you see in the left-hand column. That's our outcomes for this particular year for our students. So the status can go anywhere from very high to very low. Last year for language arts and math for our students with disabilities, they had a very low status and that's all we had. We didn't have the colors to go along with that. So the layer that's going to be added again this year is the change, which you'll see in the columns going across the top. So the change looks at our outcomes for this current school year compared to how they were last year. And we can either decline significantly, we can decline, we can maintain, increase or increase significantly. So how we picked that thirty points of improvement was we were really looking at those columns going across the top, just so we had some context of what was possible. And if we're aiming to improve um that increased column, as long as we increase by three points and up to fourteen point nine points, we would be in that increased column. So our status would still remain very low. So we would still be in that very bottom row, but we would be in that increased um column, which puts us where that star is. So if we increase by at least three points in both language arts and math, we would have an orange performance color for for both of those indicators. If we have that orange performance color for language arts and math, those two indicators would not qualify us for differentiated assistance anymore. However, we can still certainly qualify for this particular group based on college career indicator, chronic absenteeism, suspension rate, graduation rate. So it's it's the combination of different indicators that um would qualify us for DA. And so right now, we've been qualified based on language arts and math. Those two come together in a pair and then chronic absenteeism. So if chronic absenteeism were not to move and maybe suspension rate was in the red, then we may qualify again for DA. So um and I I think, you know, we're we're looking at improving thirty points, about ten points a year for the next three years. We wanted it to be both doable and ambitious. Tony, if you'd go back a couple of slides to the performance for ELA, yeah, here. So I mean, it is doable. If you look at the black line, which is the state from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen, they improved about ten points. Not every year though, and just in ELA. So that ten-point improvement each year, I I think it's doable, but it is still a pretty ambitious goal, especially when you're looking at the outcomes that we have in Petaluma City Schools for our students with disabilities, where there really hasn't been improvement at all. So that's that's kind of where we got to um to that thirty points for our goal.
Thank you, Lindsay. So um with that being said, we've we've already begun a lot of the work to help support the this goal five. We've done professional learning on early literacy, university design for learning that we've been been doing with our professional developments over the last couple of years. And also implementing our data reflection sessions with our math and and hopefully begin doing the planning for our ELA as well as conducting that special education study that we had discussed, I think, a couple of meetings ago. That will help us really give us some strong, perhaps recommendations, as well as some validate some of the things that we're seeing to help support us moving to support our our goal five.
And so I'm just wanting to, are you done, Tony? Yeah, I'm just wondering, Sarah, do you have any? Anything you want to add or no, I don't want to put you on the spot. Just asking. Okay.
No, I don't have anything specific unless people have any other questions.
I I did have a question. I don't know if it's for Tony or for Sarah. Can you um explain the data reflection sessions?
So um um so a part of the systematic piece that we we're we're trying to really develop is the data reflections processes, because the data itself doesn't mean anything unless we use it, unless we find a way to make it meaningful for us. And one of that is such as with math common assessments, the students take the common assessments for math uh as a way to anchor the conversation around what we should be doing to help those students at that particular time. So instead of waiting till the cast comes out in, let's say, the summer, where it may be too late to really make any kind of impactful decisions around what should happen in the classroom, we can make that decision, you know, periodically throughout the year during our cycles of of our data reflection sessions and have the the goal of having the the professionals, the teachers sitting together and sharing what best practices worked or didn't work and finding ways to scale those things, finding ways to find out what might be impactful for our English learners, for our students with disabilities, for all groups of students at that time, because they'll be able to see which students are performing, which ones aren't, and where we need to provide more intensive targeted interventions to support closing that gap in October and in December and in March, you know, and by the end of the year before the students actually take the the assessments. So the really the assess, that's why the assessments really need to be predictors of how students would do on the state assessments and anchor the conversation around that so that we can make those instructional shifts throughout the year and address those those gaps early so that hopefully by the time they do take the assessment, we would have a strong indication of how well they would do and if those gaps would gaps would have been closed.
Who's actually doing the reflection? Like, is it a committee? Is it a special ed department?
So it's it's with the teachers, with the teachers of that particular subject. So for elementary, it's an elementary grade level teachers. Secondary would be the uh subject level teachers who would have that conversations and and have that conversation around the data.
And special education teachers are in those data.
Correct.
Along those lines, um I know that last year, well, the the intention was that this year we would start some of these data reflection sessions and the common assessments with secondary. Because I I know it was very successful with elementary last year. So I was just wondering if those had started.
Uh, no, not yet, because this year we're we're, we've begun that reset where we're going through that shared decision-making process, much more clear with our teachers, meeting with them to determine if we're, if the assessments are the ones that will we want to create or if we want to look for outside providers that could help us with this process. So all that's is will hopefully be massaged throughout this year and and hopefully have something in place by the start of next year.
Uh, can you go back one slide, Tony?
Sure.
So I I think at the last meeting, I, one more, yeah, uh, one more, right here. So I think at the last meeting, I was asking the question, what do those points mean? And so what I'm hearing from you, or tell me if I understand this correctly. So the points are standard deviation points. So a hundred and thirty-two point three below is one point three two standard deviations from the mean, below the mean. And we want to move to within point nine one uh standard deviations or within one standard deviation of the mean by twenty twenty-eight. Is that, am I interpreting this correctly?
Um, I I'm not sure if it's about standard deviation and maybe Lindsay can help explain that, but I believe it's it, the zero is where the where students met standard and anything uh any drop below that is is the distance from that standard. So we dropped ninety-one points, ninety-one points from standard, but.
So the the distance from standard is the aggregate of every student's outcomes. And so if if student A is ten points below standard and student B is twenty points below standard, the average of those two would be fifteen points below standard.
So it's not a standard deviation, it's a standard points.
Yep.
And the points, what's the range of those points?
So it varies by grade level um and subject. So on average, it's so complicated. On average, for a student, because there's four levels, there's standard not met, standard nearly met, standard met and exceeded. For a student to move from standard not met to standard met, they would need to move depending on the grade level, but about seventy points for ELA and about seventy-five points for math.
Okay. Okay. So I mean, I I'm all for this. This is great. We've set these goals and we're and we have a mechanism for doing it. I just want to be able to communicate to our parents and families what this means. I mean, when we see minus thirty-two, a hundred and thirty-two points on an artificial scale, it has no meaning. And so maybe just a footnote or something on our or maybe a link, maybe that'd be the best, is a link from our 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 board goals to an explanation of what the range is, what the points mean.
And CDE, I think, has done a good job. They're just starting to release some communication flyers for this year that are, the audience is parents, and then they have different flyers for educators. So we can definitely link some of those flyers when the, when we're getting closer to the dashboard coming out. And they have them in English and Spanish. So it they, I think they've done a pretty good job of of making it understandable for the community.
Incorrectly if I'm wrong. Oh, go ahead.
Just one more thing. Uh, can you go to the slide comparing our scores with the state scores? The graph right there. So the Y-axis is, those two graphs are on two different Y-axes.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So that's kind of a little, you know, let's just be clear to, and we're communicating to our public and put it on the same scale so we can see how we compare to the state, because that doesn't tell us how we compare to the state.
Well, it it's on, it's actually, they're on different scales, but it's still the same range. So it's still, the 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 space between them should still be the same.
Is it?
And on, when we look at the.
Sorry, you're right, because they're negative. They're all negative.
They're all negative.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, and also when we look at the five-by-five grids, to add another layer of complexity to it, that column on the left where we're looking at status, it's different for language arts and math. Because the entire state is much lower for math than it is for language arts. So I think the very low for for math starts at like negative ninety.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying.
Sure.
My 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 bad.
And Lindsay, can you, so from from very low, if it's at same, it starts at negative ninety and then to very high, what is that? From a, you know, from the points, the raw raw points or raw data, how would, what would, what would be the point range in that very high?
For math, I don't have that off the top of my head. But I I think everything for ELA and math is just shifted down about twenty points.
Okay.
In general or just?
In general for the for this five-by-five grid. So how the state is looking at how we're getting our colors reported. They take the actual data of all of the LEAs in the state and then they make cut points based on how everybody's doing. So if everybody's lower in math, they just kind of shifted the whole thing down.
My brain wants to put everything into a percentage or it's it's this raw data.
What and what I appreciate about this and what I appreciate about the metric itself, I appreciate that we're getting credit for improvement, right? So even though we might still have a very low status, if we're moving in the right direction, we're not going to be red any longer. So I appreciate that. And then the other thing that I appreciate about the distance from standard, even though it's really confusing, what it does is it shows every kid matters and every kid's improvement matters. So even for a student who had met standard and is increasing to exceeding standard, that improvement helps move us all along. So we're no longer in this era of looking at the kids who are really close to meeting standard and trying to get them above the bubble. We're really looking at all of our kids because they all matter and and their outcomes move all of us. So it's, I I think it's a good model um so that every kid counts.
Along those lines, um, you know, I have had conversations with you about that thirty points just seemed like, why? You know, what what difference will it really make? So I really appreciate, first of all, the goal, because it it's allowing me to kind of see how this whole thing works. And in this presentation, you've convinced me that three points is good.
Okay.
But also, you know, and so thirty points would be amazing. And and then what you just said about um that it's showing improvement and giving credit for improvement and that I I wasn't getting certainly from before. So not not conversations with you, just in general, this whole uh dashboard idea. So um, thank you. You know, I think I'm understanding now more.
Well, and the dashboard is really complicated and we haven't had it for four years. So um more will be coming. It'll be released uh December fifteenth. So we'll we'll definitely be bringing more about what the dashboard means, how different indicators are are calculated and who's included in each one of those indicators.
So this was just sort of a sneak sneak preview. Sheldon asked a question. We wanted to make sure that we could clearly articulate it to to y'all.
Jaden and Phillip, do you guys have any questions, comments, anything?
Um, how are they tested on these scores?
How are they what?
How are they tested? Or like, how did they evaluate them to get the number?
So um it is the state test that students take every April, May. The Smarter Balanced Assessment, which is taken in grades three through eight and then eleven. So um it's, you know, an annual test that that everybody takes in the spring on the computer.
What else? All right. Thank you. Thank you all. All right. Next up, comments from the public on non-agendized items. If anyone is in person and has a comment, you can come to the front. Actually, fill out a yellow card and then come to the front. I'm going to read our public comment policy. Under Government Code, Section five four nine five four point three A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing that relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items period. Once a part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or a twenty-minute limit per subject matter. Is there anyone here who has a public comments? No. All right. We will move on. Adoption and approval of the agenda.
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
A second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Report on activities and correspondence of school board members since the last board meeting, Hispanic Heritage Night, SRJC High School Counselor Conference, Petaluma City Council Meeting, CASA Girls Tennis Match, Community Schools Advisory Committee, CASA Symphonic Band Concert, Grant School Walk and Roll Event and Blue Zones Meeting. Our student board members took part in the Bi-Pot Club, Environmental Club, Hispanic Heritage Night Football Game, Childhood Cancer Relief Club Meeting. All right. Uh, comments from the public on consent items. Does anyone in the public have a comment on the consent agenda? Okay. Um, approval of of consent agenda by consolidated motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Can we have a just a quick comment, what now that's on the table? I just wanted to ask Jason if you could just, there's a great question. I just wanted to ask Jason if you could just, there's a great question from, from one board member. I wanted to just highlight the employment report, change it, a, a small change to the employment report.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. So, and thank you for the question about, maybe you noticed there was a little change on the employment report, and I apologize for not including in this situation. We are recognizing that we are able to put names or employee numbers, and we are recognizing that when we release someone for cause or release them from probation, it was a little bit insensitive to just list their name on there. And so we are listing employee numbers when we release someone for cause or for probation. Anyone that resigns or retires, we would be listing their name. So we made that adjustment. Thank you for catching it. Any questions? Okay.
That makes sense and seems respectful and.
Right, anything else?
Yeah, I've got a question. Item four under Business Services, the contract with the online facilities, this is great. I, I didn't realize there was such demand for space. I, I just kind of would love a, a s- a scale of how much demand is there for our space? And is this a serious revenue source or, or not?
Funny you should ask. Our facilities, we rent out all of our sites. The business department spends, an individual probably spends anywhere from like ten to fifteen hours a week processing. I probably spend one to two hours a week, then signing and approving them and getting insurance. So it is not a great source of revenue for our district. We currently charge well below market value that other districts do. We're actually working on doing comparisons to our like districts and plan to bring something in the next month or two back to the board for consideration to increase our fees. This online platform will just help us move in the direction of less paper, and it will be a big time saver on the business department. Not even to mention, I couldn't tell you how much time the school sites spend too, because it does actually go through the school site too. So there's about four to five people involved in each piece of paper that we approve, and this will streamline it down to one person who will oversee the program itself. And then I will be the, the final approval still.
But to, but to answer, we have many of our partners and outside organizations who want to use our sites. So yeah, there, there is quite a, quite a bit of demand for our sites.
What about cleanup and making sure that they handle our sites with, with pride and don't break things or?
I have not received any complaints myself, but as part of the facility agreement, use agreement, there are responsibilities. Many people actually rent or pay for our custodial staff at about nine dollars an hour. So right now, thirty-five total. So we do, they are responsible. They do have to carry insurance to pay for any damage done to our sites. And that will continue. Actually, this will be, they will not be able to move forward in the system if they do not attach it. Whereas now people can turn in the form and we have to call them to get it. So this will actually help ensure compliance and that we can hold people responsible if they do damage our facilities.
I also think an online form will help us get more people. As someone who, at my old nonprofit, we used the CASA gym for our graduation. And you know, Chris and Dion and Dr. O were all super helpful and very responsive, but like the paper and just dealing with everything was so much effort for a great deal. Like, my boss was very thrilled to use use our, the OMU. But I think having it be available online will make us more competitive as a facility, even when we do raise our prices. Like, just being able to apply and get something done when you're an event planner is huge.
It'll save us, save a lot on the amount of time our staff are taking processing paper. And so it's still streamlined it. We all, and we also are looking, we've talked about just, we're a pub, you know, we're a public agent, it's public, public schools, and we want to be open and, and support, you know, community organizations and evening events and weekend events and things. And we also are not, we're not in the business of, of donating, losing money on, on, you know. So we, we also want to look at our, our rates and what we're charging to make it fair, equitable, and so that it's at least cost neutral.
Go ahead, Ben.
I just had a, a quick question about, along those lines, but it sounds like you haven't determined the actual. I, I was just wondering if it was going to raise the rates if at a ten percent commission. I, I don't think that's a problem, but I was also wondering about the minimum annual rental volume and if we usually are over a hundred thousand dollars, or if that's something that's unusual.
The last couple of years, we've been just under it, but the amount of, it's because of what we charge, not the amount of facilities that are in use. So at this point, that the district, that will be a cost to the district. It won't automatically increase the cost, but we will take that into consideration. If we did used opportunity costs, we actually pay far more in salaries than what we will pay in this. So actually, it will be a cost savings. So I have a question about PK. It looks like it's going to be virtual again. I thought we had a discussion last year. I don't, I just don't know if there was outreach done, if that was the preferred method. I know it looks like the orientation and the graduation is in person, which is great, but I was just wondering how the decision was made to keep it virtual.
It's my understanding that PK is flexible on how they provide their services, what platform they decide to use. I think it's based on the school sites, and maybe, as well, I can share more about it, but it's based on the school sites, I guess, request of what they think is best as far as how they would provide it, whether Zoom or in-person or hybrid or whatever versions there are. So whatever's listed is what I believe the school site had requested.
Can we ask the families, at least at the end, like what they prefer? Because I thought, you know, we were going back to in-person, it's more engaging, and I don't know.
When they do, oh, sorry. When they do the outreach, they will ask the families on what their preferred, preferred mode is, so that they are actually delivering that, that class in the way that the families want it.
Will the graduations be in-person? Because they are delightful.
Yeah. I believe so. Yes, they do.
And you'll let us know when they are?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I mean, the contract does say that the graduation and the orientation are in-person, but, so even though it says, like, virtual is highlighted, that might not necessarily be what is done. Okay, so when will that decision be made?
They are reaching out to the families, and then they will, based on what the families, the feedback that they're giving them, then they'll make the decision based on what the families, and in conjunction with the principal. What, what would be the best course? I asked that question too. I said, it says virtual, but what, they said, no, we'll survey the families.
Okay, thank you.
It will include the childcare.
Yes, this school would work towards that. Yep.
Anything else? Phillip or Jaden, do you have anything from the consent agenda? Questions, comments? No, anyone else? Oh, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, comments from the public on action items. All right. Twenty-three, twenty-four dash zero seven. Board of Education, Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School District condemning all forms of hate speech. So should we read it first? Should we take comments? What do you prefer, Superintendent Harris?
So on this one, I just wanted to, you know, two board members worked on the, on the on this resolution, and I wanted to, you know, sort of, when, when we got to the end of it, you know, I was talking with them, said, this is sort of a draft form. So if there are comments or things that people want to add, this is sort of the time to discuss. We're, we're going to take notes here live, you know, on the PDF, and before we publish it, just wanted to make sure everybody had a chance, but we wanted to do it in open session, not in a, not a Brown Act violation. So we wanted to make sure it's out in public, people can have a conversation. If there's changes that you want to make, we will do that before we publish it on our website.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments or questions about it? Any changes?
I like it. Thank you for drafting it.
Matthew for drafting most of it. Joanna and I did a little bit of word smithing, but.
I'd like to take out the word senseless hatred. I think that's sort of redundant. That's just a preference of mine. And I'd also like to, in the first whereas, I'd like to end it. And antisemitism and Islamophobia to the best of our ability. I think we should just stop there. Because this, rather than calling on families, this is a PCS Board of Education statement, and I just think we, it should, we should just end it right there, at ability. I'm not attached to these edits, but I thought I'd bring them up.
So families are mentioned further. Do you want all of the mentions of family taken out, or just that one?
No, just that one.
Is there a motion on the table? I don't even think we moved.
I'm gonna pass the gavel to Caitlin, because you're better. Take it.
All right, do I have a motion on the table?
To amend?
First to approve, just to even approve.
I'll move to approve the resolution of the Board of Education condemning all forms of hate speech.
I second.
Okay. President Pahn seconded. Now that it's on the table, do we have any motions to amend?
I move to amend the resolution, taking out the word senseless, senseless in the, in the fourth whereas column, and in the first to take out, to end it with, to the best of our ability, period.
Is there a second to this amendment?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm, I'm opposed. I just feel like we should have a call to action for families. I, I understand what you're saying, and I just feel like we need to bring everyone into the conversation.
Well, the amendment carried. So now we are discussing the resolution as amended. Would, is there any further amendments?
I just want to speak in favor of the resolution to note that in the first therefore, there is a call to action for families.
In the first what? So are we keeping that one in?
Yeah, I think so.
I have no problem with that one.
Yeah. No, I think Ellen's point is a good one, that a whereas is a statement of fact. It's not a call to action. The call to action is at the bottom.
That's it, the therefore.
Are there any other amendments to the resolution as amended? Seeing none, I call the resolution to a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? We have approved the resolution. I'm going to have us refrain from reading it into the record just until it, it'll be published on the website very soon for anyone that would like to read it. And I'm sure Superintendent Harris will also be discussing it in his newsletter, which I'm sure everyone reads.
Yes.
Please do. It's very good. And I will pass it back to President Pahn.
Thank you.
No, you can keep it. You're, you're doing great. Go ahead. Keep going.
Well, yeah.
It's going to be your job soon.
Yeah. All right, moving on to Business Services, approval of Resolution twenty-three, twenty-four dash zero eight related to emergency fire alarm work at McDowell Elementary School and to award a contract for that work. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
I move to approve Resolution two-three-two-four dash zero eight.
Second.
All right, any information we need to know about this, Amanda?
Yes, tonight we bring this resolution to have emergency work done at McDowell Elementary. Our existing fire alarms have failed. We've been employing temporary emergency fire watch. And the, sorry, excuse me, Dr. Amy Carter, Sonoma County Office of Education Superintendent, did grant approval under Public Contract Code twenty-eleven-three-A and A-one to address the situation as an emergency.
Any questions or comments from any of the board members?
So essentially, this helps us speed, speed the process, speed the process up. We were going to be working evenings, weekends to get this work done. We can't have a school without fire alarms. It's, so we need to get this done as soon as possible, which is why we're bringing this in.
Is that why it's an action item rather than in the consent agenda? Because we als- often approve contracts in the consent agenda as well.
It's because I need to abstain.
It.
From it. Yeah.
The board needs, sorry, the board does need to approve this resolution in order for us to approve the contract which comes forward if this is approved next.
You don't need to, you don't need to say that this way.
I think so.
You do? Okay.
If you're unsure, you should.
I just wanted to clarify, in the meantime, there's, what is it, an hourly or something, a walk or, what, uh, what is the phrase? Was, sorry, what's that? The fire inspection?
So there is a fire watch. It needs to be performed every hour, and it lasts about twenty to thirty minutes. So, yeah, when anybody's on campus.
So a staff person is assigned that duty right now?
Yes, they've been trained, and we do monitor it, and they
They keep a log.
Keep a log, which has been given to insurance and the fire department.
Thanks.
Great. Definitely sounds like a worthy reason for an emergency contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we have one abstention. So moving on to two-point, or sorry, yeah, something. Fourteen-point-two-point-two, there we go. Award of the contract in question to Golden State Electric. Do I have a motion?
I move to award the contract to Golden State Electric.
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, moving forward, we'll go on to three, ratify the purchase approval for a five-year subscription to go-to voiceover IP services and phone rentals. Do I hear a motion?
I move to ratify the purchase approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, anything we need to know about this one?
Yes, we brought this one. We wanted to bring it under an action item. Our phone systems are starting to fail at many of our sites, creating emergency situation. The technology department, and Dave can speak more to it, has been working really hard. They met with five vendors, and we were able to determine that go-to was the best option for our district. This will be at a cost neutral as we phase out our AT&T lines. We do have one year to bring all of our sites online. This includes the phone rental, which we were really worried in the beginning that this would be a huge cost to us with capital investment. So we were thankful that we were able to package it this way and remain cost neutral. We will continue to have at least one hard AT&T fax line at each of our sites for emergency situations if power and phone and everything goes down. We were, will be starting the first phase for schools. CASA being one of them with all of the electric work over the weekend. We were very excited that our phones did come back online yesterday. They did not at Petaluma Junior, and we were not expecting that one, so we can't win with our phones. Dave, is there anything that I missed?
Uh, but I think, I think that we're, we're planning to do this over three different phases. We have four schools that are, need to get done immediately. That's CASA, McKinley, Pen Grove, and San Antonio. And we have sort of the mid-range schools that are, will also need it, and then we'll finish up with schools that are, we're not seeing a major, major need. But what, but part of this contract is all of our schools will then be on the same system. It's voiceover IP, so it's a internet-based solution. Because of the work that our technology department did, Because of the work that our technology department did, you know, in the past few years with dark fiber. It's been described, we have plenty of bandwidth to handle this sort of, these types of phones. And it'll, it, you know, our belief is it's gonna be fairly cost neutral at the end of the day. We'll be getting rid of our AT&amp;T service.
Great. Maddie doesn't like any, any business name that has an "and" in it. PG&E, AT&amp;T, she's just like, get rid of them all.
The "and."
The "and" is the, yeah. Okay, all in favor of ratifying the purchase approval? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Great, moving on to approval of the revised unadded, unaudited actuals.
I move to approve the unaudited actuals.
I second.
All right, Amanda, what do we need to know about the revised actuals?
All right, thank you. Tonight we brought back our unaudited actuals. We did find out after the board approved our unaudited actuals that we did have a double entry of revenue in some of our restricted funding, specifically in our arts and music discretionary block grant. We were able to, before the county office sent it to the state, we reached out and we were able to make the revision. Good news, they were able to do a whole, they finished looking at our whole unaudited actuals and they didn't request or suggest any other revisions. So that was promising. And we have a new procedures in place to ensure that this won't happen again.
Great. Any questions or comments from any board members? All in favor of this approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Great.
Moving on to Ed Services, approval of resolution 2324-9 to fully comply with the requirements of Ed Codes 6119 through 6252 regarding sufficiency of textbooks or instructional materials for the school year. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve resolution 2324-09.
Second.
All right, Tony, what do we need to know about?
So this resolution is just a follow-up with our requirement under, under the Ed Codes 60119. We held a public hearing at the last board meeting and followed that with this resolution to complete our requirements so that we can qualify for the, for the instructional materials funding.
Great. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Approval of resolution 2324-10, doing the same thing for the elementary school district. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve 2324-10. I second.
Any questions on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Great.
Moving on to item 15, comments from the public on discussion or information items. Y'all, no, we good? Cool. So moving on to 16, discussion and information only, administration, human resources. So first up will be discussion of public comment procedures.
So I just wanna, we just add this as, we added this as a discussion item for public comment procedures. Obviously, we are very cognizant of, of what is going on in our county and our surroundings. We know that Santa Rosa City Schools, the county supervisors, and the city of Petaluma all received to some very unwelcome, disturbing hate speech primarily, primarily over Zoom platform. We decided to, we followed our attorney's advice to go to, to continue to stream, to stream our meetings in, in the Zoom format or virtual format, doesn't matter which the platform, but. And, and have our public comments be in person, which is really back to how it, how it used to be and how it still is written into the law unless we decide to stay in a hybrid format. With that said, obviously, we also appreciate our public, you know, people be, people needing to stay at home. And it's, you know, it can be a hardship to come to the meeting. So there are pros and cons of, of, of how we do this. And so we wanted to just open it up for discussion, for board members to have the conversation. Do you? It was hard because it was the first time, so we made the change and wanted to have the conversation so that we could have a conversation in public and hear from board members, this is your meeting in public. It's not my meeting, it's your meeting in public. And so I just want to make sure that we're, we're, we're doing what you all want to do as, as far as the public comment procedures.
I think it's really important to keep public comment available virtually. I think that with the right protocol and Dave's fast fingers, we can mute somebody within half a second of them going AWOL off script as long as we're prepared and knowledgeable about that. But I think we have to do a better job of when we promote people, making sure that they're actually following the instructions that we verbally give them, that they have to put their first and last name in the chat. Because at some of these meetings, people are listing names of known serial killers and Nazis, like.
Or just initials.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not calling on you with just initials. Like, that's not happening. To fill out a public comment card, you have to give your name and your address. And I'm not asking for all of that, but I want to know what your full name is and what you specifically want to talk about. And people almost never do that on Zoom. So I think moving forward, we actually have to make them do what we are verbally asking them to do. We ask our students to do what we ask them to do. Why can't these mostly adults?
And I think.
Do that.
We also need to make sure they have their camera on because that's another aspect of.
We can't do that, that, when we promote someone to be a speaker, it's just, it's camera off. And I think that's probably, personally, I think that's better, but that's the way that having it as a panel and a webinar is, right, Dave?
Yeah. Allow them to talk.
Right.
And then just not give the option to turn the camera off. Alternative, you can call the analysts and then they can turn the camera. I think it's harder to mute them more moves.
Okay.
Given the official talk, move it quickly.
Thank you for the clarification.
So Caitlin, are you suggesting, if we were, we don't know yet, to continue taking online comments to have first and last name, which I completely agree with, and address and have it be verified?
No, I don't think it has to be address personally. I'm not attached to that, but I do think first and last name is important. And I think it's important to say what you're speaking about because if you want to talk about the smart train, like, even though that's not racist or anti-Semitic, no. It's not our subject matter jurisdiction.
Yeah. And so I'll just say, so I'm just, just gonna put this out there. This is, the way that we formatted this meeting was the way that our legal counsels strongly recommended that we do it. I hear what Caitlin's saying. Another alternative could be, you could take, this is what Dave and I were talking about earlier, you could take comments, written comments.
Right.
That would be another option to do. But I hear what Caitlin's saying, I want to continue the conversation.
When you say written, you mean submitted via email?
Yes.
Okay.
Email or you could do it on the platform, correct, Dave?
Or, yeah, in the chat.
In the chat.
In the chat. Because we have done that and people have read comments that have been sent to us.
And then we could read the comments and if it's totally not in our, you know.
I mean, I think that risks the same stuff just written instead of verbally. Like, if they write out the N-word, is it any better or worse to see that versus hear it?
We just, we just wouldn't read it.
Right, but we would see it.
But.
I don't want my black president seeing the N-word. I don't want my Jewish co-person seeing, yeah. Co-person, I'm like, co, I forgot the word trustee, colleague, co, yeah.
No, I, I think before the city council meeting, I would have agreed with you, Caitlin, but I'm gonna, based on what I heard at the city council meeting, it's, it's not always that obvious when to switch it off. I mean, they're very clever and now they're getting their message in. And sometimes you don't know what's, what they're talking about until halfway through their message. And then reflecting on, you know, the, how, how well our online comments have been used. You know, after the pandemic, you know, after the shutdown ended, especially in the last year, I would say, we haven't had a ton of folks giving comment online. And then the last, last point for me is if they're in person, at least we get a sense that they are geographically in our community, you know, close enough where they could show up. I have a hunch that a lot of the folks that were online at city council weren't in our community. And I just don't want to give any airtime to that kind of nonsense.
As someone who was at city council and made a comment, I heard some of the vitriol coming out of Zoom and it took a while for them to stop it. So from my point of view, I appreciate having people come in person. That's just the way I feel.
In my understanding, Ellen, correct if I'm wrong, at, at city council, and I believe our procedure would be to war, give a warning and then, then mute or then stop it, so.
Well, there's been times before we've just cut people off. We didn't give a warning in previous meetings. I know you've.
Yeah, the warning is in the, in the, in our intro.
Right.
That you don't get a second warning to not be racist. Sorry.
Well, and also at city council meeting that night, there were people in person who were problematic as well. I mean, that's why we left the meeting early. Yeah.
And I, and I, I do agree, Caitlin, that, you know, the online did open up, you know, access to our meetings, which is something that we're gonna lose by keeping it here. But to me, that's why we have office hours and the board meeting is, is actually a pretty lousy way to get public input on anything. And so I think it's more important that we continue to be out there in, in the, in the office hours and we can keep this board hearing to be in person. That's, that's my personal view on it.
Jayden and Philip, do you guys have any? Any thoughts, comments about this, keeping it in person, online, both?
I can see what you're saying with like, having access to like, online. Like, I feel like that's important, but also I feel like in person it ensures that they, like, they'll not be, I think it's not justified if it's in person. I mean, obviously, it's not justified at all, but like, at least we can do something about it in person if that were ever to happen.
This is the classic tension of a democracy, the balance of freedom versus safety, right? Positive freedom versus negative freedom. Sorry, policy side degree coming out.
You know, I, I, when I, listening to this, it's interesting because I, I really don't, you know, because we never had Zoom before and we've only had it for three years, I'm willing to give, get rid of it. I mean, not, not the Zooming, but the, the chat. But thinking about, well, is it, is it more, is it, is it, would it be more effective? Would we have more interaction with the public if we did include it again or continue to do it? And I was thinking about all the different times when we've had a lot of public comment on something that's on our agenda. And we have people filling up the room and they're passionate about what they want us to hear. We get it at office hours also. I don't think we've ever had that, well, we have had it on Zoom. And, but, but, you know, aside from the ones that were awful, you know, there were a lot of people that were very passionate about, you know, closing the schools and not reopening. And they had good points and, and it, we could only hear them on Zoom. But now they have that option and I just kind of feel like it was more effective when they're here. And if someone wants to just, you know, it's so easy to just zoom in and say a lot of awful things and, and not be held accountable at all. And it's still, and it, it's just disruptive in and of itself, you know, because they, everyone's kind of like, is it gonna happen? And so, and also it affects, they had to close the meeting. And it was mostly from Zoom intervention, you know, interactions.
You mean the board of supervisors?
No, the city council.
Well, the meeting still went on.
Yeah. I thought that they closed it, that they stopped the meeting.
No, they just stopped the online comments, like the last.
And then they adjourned and then they came back. They never.
That was board of supervisors.
That was the board of supervisors.
Santa Rosa, I don't know if Santa Rosa City Council did too.
It took them.
Yeah.
Quite a while and several really horrible comments before they started stopping them. So I.
Yeah.
From my opinion, I really, I, I've always really liked Zoom. I've loved the fact that it brought more people into our meetings. But I feel very strongly about this, that if people want to say something to us, they need to come and say it in person.
Well, I guess the question also is, are we shutting down public comments because, like, on Zoom because of things that went on in other meetings? Or because it's not working for us right now?
Good question. Well, I think it's just the potential for abuse, which has been demonstrated in other public meetings that are also school board meetings in, in Santa Rosa. So, you know, I think that we're just, we're proactive. It's not necessarily that we're cutting it off.
Well, they've also had, like, people come in person and they had police that, I don't see the police, they've never come to our meetings even when we thought that there was something that was gonna happen. So I don't, I mean, I'm torn about it. On the one hand, yes, that's how they are accessing people and saying horrible things. But on the other hand, it hasn't been an issue for us yet. Like, I don't want to shut it down, so I don't want to be sitting.
But I think it was an issue for us when that's all we had. The chats were horrible.
Yeah, when we were solely, when we were solely on.
When we were solely on there. And then once, you know, because of, you know, we're a school board and not a county. I don't know, I just, but then I'm.
But then is that inviting people in person to be crazy?
Yeah. I'd like to have this hall. I'd like to have a lot.
No, and not, like, of the crazy people, of the racist people? No, that's what I'm saying, like, of the racist people. Do we want them?
Show up, I think there's a power to being anonymous.
Can you put your microphone on?
I think there's a certain power to being anonymous and feeling like.
Yeah.
You can't see me, you don't know my name. I could be calling from Timbuktu and I can give my one minute of vitriol and.
But is that a story that we're telling ourselves? Because people have shown up in person as well, in this county, to, to meetings. So.
I understand that. I just, I don't know. It's, it's very personal for me.
Yeah, it's personal for me too, it's personal for all of us. We all have to sit and have the stuff lobby at us. I think that's why it's like attention, like, you know what I'm saying? Like, should we? Is that what's the best thing to do moving forward?
No, we're not gonna.
I don't know the answer to that, Joanna.
You can't keep somebody from coming to a public meeting. So if they want to show up, they're gonna show up. We can still cut them off if they, you know, start to speak that way. But we are not required to be online. And so, and I think we understand that folks' behaviors online is a lot different than it is on, in person. And so that's what we're cutting off.
I would just also say that for a lot of people who are just there to talk on one specific item, you never know how long things are gonna take. So asking someone to come sit here for what sometimes ends up being three hours, because I'm, if they want to talk about something, I can say, I think it might be on around 6:30, but I don't really know. And they don't want to miss it, so they come at six and then they're here till nine just to give a three-minute public comment, like, how is that equitable, the people that have time to sit around for three hours? Like, or grade papers for three hours? I know, no, but. I love our teachers.
That's why Erin has her computer.
Yeah, that's what I mean, you can do stuff. You could do stuff while you're here. But a lot of people don't think to bring stuff to do for three hours because they've never been to a board meeting before. They just see an agenda item that they're really passionate about. I mean, that's what I remember seeing in a lot of meetings when I was thinking about running for this seat. And I had no idea how long I was gonna sit for to make a public comment. And I had nothing better to do, so it was fine, but, I mean, that, yeah.
That's the same whether it's online or in person. So I'm not sure what the.
Well, I could be like cooking dinner and doing, like, even driving the kids, you can have Zoom on your phone. Like, unfortunately, some people do it. I'm not saying I do it, but you could do, call in and it'll be on audio. I've, I've heard people do it on public comment, like, they're like, oh, sorry, I'm picking up the kids from dance class. Sorry if there's extra noise, but.
Philip, I just feel like you have something to say.
Well, I do have a question. So if we're, if we're thinking about stopping this like Zoom commenting thing, are we just like completely like getting rid of Zoom? Are we still, still keeping the Zoom on but just turning off comments?
You like tonight, how we, like, we're still broadcasting the meeting and live and then it'll go on YouTube, but we're only taking comments on these things from the three folks here. And we appreciate. Yeah. So I guess the discussion.
That's the discussion.
That was the discussion.
And I, I don't know where I saw this, but I, I, I saw it somewhere, but I think it was Santa Rosa or the, where, I can't remember where it was that it was, they had looked at some IP addresses and it was, there were some out of state. This is out of state, east coast.
It's been happening all over the Bay area where they've been like zooming in from all over the country. Yeah.
So it's not, it's not like people, it's not necessarily.
It's not our constituents. Yeah.
Okay, but technically people who aren't our constituents still have the right to address us. Just, I'm not saying that we should let them if they're doing that, but you don't have to live in our district to give a public comment legally.
Okay, so where do we go from here? Superintendent? Your discussion item.
Voting. Should it be an action item at some point?
I don't know. Well.
Could be. I mean, I think I put it up here. I put it here for, for discussions, hoping to get some direction for, for future, for future meetings. But it seems like we're a little divided.
Well, we can always keep it as a discussion. Maybe have some time to think about it.
And the public can make comments in the future on it.
Yeah, maybe.
The public can win. If you're watching this and have very strong feelings one way or another, please let us know whether it's via email or coming in person. Those are your options right now.
Yeah. What, like I said before, what, what we have currently is what is strongly recommended from our attorneys. And, um, what, you know, other districts have, I think who are still hanging on to Zoom to have sort of, for example, Santa Rosa switched over. This is back to meetings in person and streaming the meetings on, online. But it's, again, it's, it's, it's the board's meeting in public. So I, I wanted, I wanted to hear from you and get some sort of direction. So.
Well, you have no direction. We're directionless.
We've got five different opinions.
All right, so we move on. Vice President.
Yeah, moving on to amended administrative regulation thirteen twelve point three, uniform complaint procedures. We discussed this or we were informed about it the last one. We can discuss it. Again, does anyone have any questions for Jason about this?
We just, we just did the second read on the board policy on this one. And so this is the AR that just brought in line with the board policy that we, the amended board policy that we just approved earlier. I kind of outlined it. There's some format changes and then there were some additions, some small additions that brought it in line, but a lot of it was largely similar to what we had as the administrative regulation originally. Any questions?
Any questions or comments on this one? Great. Consider it discussed. The first reading of a new board policy forty one fifty eight about employee security. Can you tell us about that one a little bit?
Yeah, so, um, so we have an administrative regulation forty one fifty eight on employee security, which, we will be updating the administrative regulation. It needs some attention, but we also don't have a board policy to go with that. They are, so I thought we'd start off with the board policy and put that in place and then we'll, I come back in, in the next meeting or two with the, um, updated AR. So just, that's something that we've been talking, that we've been talking with our labor partners about, and we've been concerned with as a district is just the safety in schools and safety of our employees. So it's important, important policy to address.
Yeah, I think this is really important. I think it's easy to forget that we're a very big employer and like we have to be thinking about our employees' safety. Even against other employees or from kids, wish we didn't have to think about it, but we do.
Yeah.
So when was the last time that this was amended?
So this one.
Or created.
But this has never been a policy.
This is all new pol, so hasn't there always been employee? I mean, I can remember having many.
So there was.
Conversations.
Maddie, there was always an administrative regulation, the AR, but the board, for some reason, there was no board policy behind it. So this is board policy. Then we'll be, so next meeting you'll see this coming for under consent and then you'll see the AR coming under discussion.
Yeah. The AR has been there for a while. I'd have to look at when it was up to, I did look, I don't remember.
Probably two thousand six or two thousand, given the last ones that we.
Yeah, so.
They're all two thousand or two thousand six. I swear to God, yeah.
So we're gonna freshen it up. It'll be great.
Cool. All right, moving on, um, speaking of uniform complaint procedures, tell us about the uniform complaint report for the last quarter.
Yeah, thanks. So, um, we actually, we actually did have one thing to report on this. Uh, we had one complaint that was filed. It was actually, and, and Ellen asked a question about this. It actually was not filed under the Williams complaint. It was filed under the uniform complaint procedure, but it was something that's under the jurisdiction of the Williams because it was about, uh, teacher vacancy. So, um, so just that, that complaint has been resolved, but that was the one thing that we did have to report in this quarter.
Any questions or, I'm just curious, which school was it?
It was at Pengrove.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
I, we, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, is this like, is this report like, it was like sent to the board to resolve? Or is it like, it was resolved at that school?
Say that, sorry, say that again, Jay.
Like, was this report like given to the board, like to resolve or was it like solved?
The complaint.
Yeah, complaint.
Oh, yeah, great question. So the uniform complaints come to, usually come to my office to human resources. So I worked with the complainant to help resolve it. There were a couple of issues to take care of. So I worked with them and worked with the site and worked with, um, our special ed department to resolve it.
All right, any other questions? Moving on to Ed Services, updating of contacts for previously approved MOU between Petaluma City Schools and Calpass. What's up with this one, Tony?
So this is an MOU that's been in existence since twenty fifteen and it doesn't expire. So what we're doing is just updating the contact from the district so that it's relevant and current.
Probably a good idea.
Yes.
Sounds, sounds logical. Any questions or comments on this one? Great. Moving on to future business. What future business do we have?
I think we need to discuss some more about public comment procedure, perhaps. I don't know, bring it as an action item or further discussion item?
What would y'all like?
Maybe further discussion item. What do you think?
Probably action. We can still discuss action items and.
Yeah.
Might as well.
I'm just being passive. Okay.
It might as well have a direction.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, so, you know, I'm just, I'll just share from our legal department, from our, our legal counsel. It doesn't have to be, it doesn't, I hear what you're saying. It doesn't have to be an action item, but we can bring it as an action item so that, so that there can be some sort of, almost like a resolution or a, um, some direction, right?
Resolve.
I think so. And I think the public is probably more likely to see it on an action item and give public comment if they know we're gonna vote on it versus.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, so perhaps I create a, a resolution that's from our, from our legal counsel and then can, you can discuss and then edit or change, or do you wanna, how, how would you like to move that forward?
Well, I really liked the process we went through about the hate resolution.
Okay.
Where it was out there and we talked about it.
Yes.
Cause I think those discussions in public are very important.
Should it be a board policy? Can we do a res, like, can we just, you know, what, do a board policy and have two hearings or whatever about it and then it's the board policy moving forward, whatever it ends up being. I don't know if this is the jurisdiction of board policy as much. It seems.
So it's.
Or would it be amendment to the governance handbook?
Governance, yeah, I mean, let me, I'll look into it and figure out how, how we can at least have.
Give us something to vote on.
First read and then a second.
Perfect.
Sure.
Cool. Any other?
Could we make tonight's, uh, procedure the status quo? I mean, what we would be voting on.
Yes.
Is tonight's. Right.
So Sheldon, you do have a direction. Look at you. Okay. That was a direction. That was good. I think that's what we were looking for.
Well, we have to have something.
Yeah.
Yes.
I was just like, I don't know.
And that's what I was suggesting about this, that what we did tonight was our, our legal counsel's strong recommendation for us to follow.
Okay.
I'll make that the default for next meeting and I'll put it on as either a resolution or a handbook. Something about the governance handbook.
Amendment to the handbook.
By, like a bylaw or something.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll look into how to, how to do it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I actually like that option better. So when the next board comes in, they can discuss it and decide what they want to do.
Like a bylaw.
That will all be done by then, whenever that happens.
Cool. Any other future business?
Yes, um, since I've been gone for a while. I apologize. Oh, uh, Safe Streets and Safe Routes to School. I went to the walk, rock, walk and roll at Grant and, um, and then I heard from McDowell that they have it every month. McNear has it every month. Grant does not have it every month. And so, um, and there's also lots of, uh, proposals from Safe Streets, working with the city to make the streets in front of all of our schools.
Yes.
Safe, which they are not.
So.
And so, um, I'd really like to have an update.
Sure.
Not, maybe in the future, after there's been more conversation with the city on where they are with improving the streets around the schools, because I, I'm not getting, I'm no longer on their, their list, so I, I'm not getting information about what exactly is happening. I'm getting it from Safe Streets and Cool Petaluma. So I'm just wondering.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm wondering if you want a, if you want a presentation or, or an update, or if you'd like to have a board member or two come to the, uh, it's not, it's not really a committee. It's a, um, we hosted a meeting with Safe Routes to School, the City of Petaluma, Police Department, et cetera, et cetera. And so we could have a board member to, if you wanted to join.
Went to that one.
Where, uh, no, it was, it was while you were gone. It was like
Oh.
Two weeks ago, maybe.
Oh, I also think that we do have a safety committee and I think having um, the city come and talk to the safety committee and maybe doing it that way.
So, so what do you prefer? I just want to stick to Maddie. What, do you prefer, you want to have a, an update or would you like to have a board member to join? The group is just started and so the idea is to start to bring more and more people on.
Yeah.
It was sort of a planning, what are we doing with, uh, Safe Routes to School? How is the city involved? They had quite a few city representatives there, including, including the city manager.
Good.
And, um.
Can we just have them come? Cause I'm just like, this is their, these are their streets. And I'm just gonna be shade, like I don't, like, they need to just fix the streets. Like I, I don't know what more discussion needs to happen, what we can actually do. It just seems like it's the, it just keeps getting talked about, but there's no action, but we can't really do anything about it, right?
Well, so, so city hall is gonna start holding these meetings and then I think it's gonna go back and forth between Luquezi and the, and city hall and then start visiting schools and looking at, you know, I, there, my, my recommendation was let's go and look at school sites at drop off and at pickup. And let's start to involve as many people as we can to figure out, how do we make?
But why are we doing their traffic studies? You know what I'm saying? I mean, for real.
You feel like we're doing their job?
Yeah.
Can we have a like resolution to draft, to send a letter to them, like signed as a whole?
Like, can y'all just do something?
Like officially put them on.
Would you participate in that?
Yes.
Let's do that. Let's do that. We don't need a presentation. We need to work on this.
We need to work, we're already, that's what I'm saying. We, we have a working group.
Yes.
That's just started up. I mean, it was almost like a planning and then we start to bring in more, as many people as we can, including our teachers, staff, principals, getting people involved in, uh, it was in, it was just an initial meeting to start to say, hey, we gotta put our heads together and figure this out, you know, for.
I would love to have, um, you know, parent representation also, because they're the ones that are most impacted by picking up and, you know, trying to figure out how to get their kids to school and bring them home. A lot of them would like to have safer streets so that they could, you know, be environmentally responsible and get their kids to school without getting killed on I Street. So, um.
Let's be real, like my kids are in college. I remember working with their elementary school on this.
I know. I know, but, but there are, there are organizations, Safe Streets, um, Petaluma has, um, you know, Bruce Hagan is very, very involved. He's got all kinds of ideas. And so what I would hope by having board representation on there is to really push it. Which I would be happy to do. As someone who has taken youngins to school and picked them up, I can tell you that even though there's blinking lights when kids crossing the street, cars don't pay attention. So they go right through, kids are trying to cross the street, that they've pushed the button like they're supposed to. I saw this at McNear many times.
So are we?
Future business is putting Maddie.
Maddie, is anyone else, anyone else interested in joining that group, working group? How about our student board members? Anybody interested in that?
I'll go and cuss my ass. I can't be on that.
I'll join Maddie.
So Maddie, Maddie and Ellen, we'll make sure that you get, um, Esmeralda is gonna be our, our point. I'm, Esmeralda and I were both on it, so we'll, we'll make sure that you get an invite.
Maddie, is there something else on your list for future business?
Oh, yeah, that was only one thing.
Seemed like you had a whole list. I wasn't sure. Okay. Okay, President Pahn, do you have something on your?
Uh, I would like an update about the math assessment. Doesn't have to be next meeting, but before the end of the twenty twenty three year, hopefully.
Yeah, we can, so particularly the secondary, because the elementary, we can, we can do a math assessment update in probably what? Like December or November, December?
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm also wondering about the ELA assessments. I was told that was the next. So when is that process gonna start?
So, um, so I can give an update, I guess, at the same time we do the math update, but that's just starting this year and we've been having the articulation meetings.
So let's do, we'll do an assessment update in, most likely late in November, December. Okay?
Sounds good. Any other future business? Great. Um, we do not have to adjourn to closed session, so we're gonna do a public report of action taken in closed session. In regards to case twenty twenty three zero nine one eight D eight one, the case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by California Ed Code. Prior disciplinary actions have been attempted and were not successful and/or due to the nature of the act, the presence of the pupil causes a continuing danger to the physical safety of the pupil and others. The recommended motion is for the board to support, support the administrative hearing panel's recommendation for suspended expulsion in accordance to board policy and to facilitate enrollment in an alternative school. The student's expulsion status will be in effect for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year. We approve that unanimously with a vote of five zero zero in closed session. And with that, we will adjourn until our next meeting.